All right, we're close enough. We call the meeting. The pleasure to lead this, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are, well, my report, a couple of things I have to note here. We are observing the social distancing and we're expecting a few guests tonight. We will try and accommodate them as much as we can. We do have a public hearing at 6:30. We will take a recess for that in regards to the fortitude senior living pains will LLC variants. And at the, towards the end, we'll be going into closed session to discuss an offer on real property located at 810 Deekman Drive, Lot 4, Block 2, Deekman Business Park, Platte 2, parcel number 70.38748.0030. The rest of my report is that we're going to do number, new business or old business, number A, right towards the beginning because Ryan's going to be on the line from Schlener and Wenner, and we'll get that done. And that's pretty much about it in my report. Councilmember Lebo.
I had a park and tree board meeting and a library board meeting, and then our special council meeting last week. That's about it.
Okay. Councilmember Hertzberg?
I had the three special city council emergency management meetings, two property negotiation meetings, public works, and the special joint budget and finance meeting before this. All time record, seven meetings.
Seven meetings, all right. Good for you. Councilmember Rinkie?
I don't have seven, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Maybe I'm slacking. I have a couple of property negotiation meetings, then we had our policies and procedures meeting on Wednesday.
And a lot of that's going to be on their agenda tonight for everything that, from park and tree to policies and procedures and public works. Councilmember Gilmore?
Park and tree, policies and procedures, plus the special councils.
Plus, yeah, all right, okay. Then we do, anything to report from admin or staff or?
No.
Nope, okay. We do have one department head report, Mr. Mergan.
Yes, thank you. First of all, the spray cleanup has been rescheduled, and that is to July 25th, tentatively. Being the school will obviously be under construction, we will have to relocate, and now we're looking at the township hall parking lot up there. Our other site would probably be the 605 Lake Avenue, but I think it would work better up at the township hall. Hydro flushing crews will be out next week, Wednesday and Thursday flushing hydrants. Compo site obviously is open, and it has been seeing some quite heavy use last few days. Any resident that does want to go up there, again, it is open. The RV dump site is also open, and it's not hooked up yet, but people can use it. Let's see, the Steelco project bids will be coming up, and do this next week. And then the airport, we just did get a little fuel, and the prices were down. We will be seeing a significant drop in our fuel price up there. Thank you.
All right, any questions for Ryan? If not, okay, then we have the consent agenda before us, which then include the minutes from those seven meetings on page one and the vouchers on page two totaling $814,829.16.
Make motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, second by Rinkie to approve the consent agenda discussion. All favor, aye? I propose none, that carry. All right, then we will take care of old business number A, the 2019 audit, and Ryan is still on the line.
Ryan, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, you're up.
You're up.
Awesome. All right, well, I'm going to keep it nice and short and sweet for you guys tonight.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm assuming you can all see my screen here?
Yep.
I'm going to walk you through the audit results from your 2019 audit. So flipping into our first slide here, basically just some required communications about how the audit went. You know, overall, the audit went very smoothly. You know, we've got a great working relationship with management, with city personnel here. They do a great job prepping for us, giving us everything that we need for the audit. Really nothing unusual that came up during the audit. Everything kind of, kind of went according to plan, put it that way. A couple of significant estimates in your financial statements, though, that we always like to point out down at the bottom, related to the calculations for your net pension liability and your net OPEB liability. Both of these are calculated by an actuary at the end of the year, and there's just so many inputs that go into these that we like to point out that, hey, these can't swing from year to year and skew your financials a bit, so something to keep an eye on. You know, as part of the audit, we're not only looking at your numbers and verifying your financial activity, but we're also looking at your internal controls and your accounting policies and procedures in place. And according, you know, along with that, we have three matters to report to you here, which are, these are the same three findings that we reported in the past, and they're very common findings. The first one here relates to audit adjustments. Basically, this is just letting the city know, or letting the readers of the financial statements know, that during the audit, in order to get you to that clean opinion that we expressed in your financial statements this year, we did need to post a few adjustments in order to help get you there. Not very many adjustments, but just a few that pushed it beyond the threshold where we need this finding. The second item we have here, the segregation of duties, this is the most common finding that we report. Basically, it just means that due to the size of your city and the number of staff you have in place, you're not able to fully segregate all of your accounting functions to the extent that it's very ideal. And finally, the last one we have here is related to financial statement preparation. And this is just letting the users of the financials know that we, as a third party, did prepare the financial statements on behalf of you. Part of the audit, we also review your compliance with various Minnesota statutes, you know, things like your process for contract bidding, where you're holding public funds, your conflicts of interest policies, and any activity that comes up in that department, et cetera. We did have a few, or a couple findings, two findings this year, related to a couple of these statutes listed down at the bottom. First of these relates to the fire state aid dollars that flow through the city. These state aid dollars get paid to the city, and then the city turns around and pays them for fire rates. And that payment is supposed to occur within 30 days, and I believe it was just a little bit outside that 30-day window this year. The second one that we have here relates to your deposits being secured by either FDIC, you know, insurance coverage, or collateral that's assigned by the bank at the end of the year. And there was actually a brief period of time at the end of the year where you had some cash that wasn't fully collateralized or insured, and because of that, we had to have this finding as well. With that, we'll look into the numbers a little bit here. We've got a trend analysis here, starting with the general funds. Just the general fund, looking at 2015 through 2019. Your revenues in the blue, expenditures in the red, and then your fund balance is the green. And we also have your 2019 budget off to the right here. Revenues for the year came in about $139,000 over budget. Expenditures came in over budget by about $185,000. And your other sources, which is your transfers out to other funds, out to your capital project funds, primarily your capital project funds, that was pretty close to budget as well. Overall, you had a decrease in your fund balance of about $224,000. Your actual, your budgeted decrease was about $189,000. So you ended the year with a fund balance of about $1.7 million in your own fund. Overall, your activity was pretty close to your budget. Looking at your other governmental funds here that have some significant activity in that would be your debt service fund and your capital projects fund. Debt service, the activity here is pretty standard, what you would expect, at revenues from taxes and assessments, being used to pay your expenditures for your debt service payments. Overall, with that activity, you had an increase in your fund balance of about $202,000. Capital projects fund, your revenues here, property taxes, various other revenues, miscellaneous charges here, but the main activity that you're seeing here in 2019 is your expenditures and your other sources. These expenditures, about 3.4 million of this relates to your 2019 improvement project. And the other sources, this is the bond proceeds from the debt that you issued in order to finance that project. So because you had proceeds of about 4.2 million, along with some transfers in from other funds in order to finance those projects, but the projects weren't fully complete yet, you had an increase in your fund balance of about $973,000. So you ended the year with a fund balance of about 2.1. And I would expect that to probably drop off a little bit in 2020 as you complete the remainder of those projects and incur the rest of those expenditures. Getting your proprietary funds here, first we've got your water fund. Another trend analysis here, the blue being your operating revenues, red being your operating expenses, and the purple being your change in net position each year. So you can see your change in net position did drop off a little bit from 2018 to 2019, but it was still an increase of about $38,000. The biggest fluctuation that I see from an operating standpoint, you did have some additional expenditures from 2018 to 2019. Your expenditures increased about $63,000, and that was mostly due to additional repairs and maintenance and other contractual services that were required. So your operating income came out about $7,600. Non-operating items for investment income, debt, interest, et cetera, gets you your increase in net position here of $38,000. Your sewer fund, same sort of graph here, same sort of analysis. The past two years now, you've had positive operating income. The biggest change is from 2018 to 2019 in your sewer fund. You had an increase in your operating revenues, your charges for services, about $69,000. Your increase in your operating expenses was about $100,000. So overall, you had an operating income of $45,000 a year. Your non-operating activity here, the biggest change you're seeing is in these non-operating revenues, and this is that grant that you received from AMPI, or the AMPI project, I should say, in order to help finance that project. And that is what's accounting for the majority of your increase in net position of $738,000 a year. And your last fund we're going to walk through here is your liquor fund. Liquor fund operations were actually very similar to that of the prior year. Your operating revenues, so your overall sales, net cost of sales, is extremely close to last year, about $331,000 this year. Operating expenses, about $302,000. The majority of this increase in your operating expenses relates to additional pension expense. Since your proportionate share of the statewide pension liability did go up a little bit, so about $10,000 of expense was recognized in 2019. This non-operating income you see here, this $19,700, this is pretty much entirely investment income, and then we've got a transfer out to your general fund of $37,500. And after that transfer, you still had an increase in net position of about $11,000. Okay, so that's kind of a high-level synopsis of your fund-level financial statements, but we also have your government-wide financial statements, where we take all of those funds and we wrap them all together as one reporting entity, and we put them on the full accrual basis of accounting, where we're showing all of your long-term assets, infrastructure, long-term liabilities such as debt, bonds, net pension liability, and we look at it all in aggregate. So here we have your government-wide assets on this slide, and the next slide, we have your government-wide liabilities. Biggest increase that we see here is due to your infrastructure that you put money into creating during the year. So you issue debt, you've got some cash proceeds that are still on hand at the end of the year, that's the increase in your current assets, and then you've got some additional infrastructure, you know, capital assets that were constructed during the year, and that's what's accounting for this increase. Overall, your assets increased by about $8.7 million. Now, in direct relation to that increase, you also had an increase in your liabilities of about, in total, $6.7 million. Now, that increase in liabilities is, of course, mostly this long-term debt that was issued for those projects that we talked about, you know, your 2019 improvements, and then also your AMPI utility project. But you also have some additional liabilities at the end of the year related to contractor, you know, construction, retainage, and construction tables. And the green bar that we always break out here, this is your net pension liability. This is your proportionate share of the statewide pension liability that's basically just assigned to the city. The city has no control over this, they couldn't pay it off if they wanted to. It's just basically your proportionate share of the pension deficit. And that covers it. Any questions?
Any questions since about an hour or half hour ago? Nope? Nope, good job.
Nope, no questions, Ryan.
All right, thank you. Well, if you have any questions, here's my contact info.
Yep.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yep, thank you. Bye.
Okay, then we are on page nine of your agenda there. There's a recommended motion if we want to approve the audit.
I'll make the motion.
2019 audit.
I'll make the motion to approve the 2019 audit.
Second. Okay, motion by Lebo, second by Hertzberg to approve the 2019 audit discussion. All favor, aye?
Aye.
Propose, none, that carry. All right, then now we can go back up to new business item A, hiring part-time maintenance worker on page three, and let's see, Ron, you got them already started?
Thank you. Jennifer and myself, we did interview the two applicants that we did have for the part-time maintenance position. And the one that we are recommending here, he did work at the Wondertainment for 37 years and was a lead person for 20 of that, and I think he would be an extremely good fit for us here, so it would be our recommendation that we do hire him.
See a driver for the rug people, or is that some of the uniform people? That was a different one.
He worked at Electrolux.
Oh, okay. Just a relation. It was a Shaneburg, too. Forget his name. Yeah, okay.
I'll make the motion to hire Mark Shaneburg, at grade one, step one, $13.86 per hour per the labor union contract.
Second. Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Rinkie to hire Mark Shaneburg, at grade one, step one, $13.86 per hour, plus the labor union contract, per the labor union contract discussion. All favor, aye? Aye. Propose, none, that carry. All right, item B, park and tree board report on page four. We got a couple of things to talk about there in regard, well, and our emergency services director left, too, but in regards to keeping the parks open in the interim and what, who's, Ron, you going to report?
Any other report, I'll start at the bottom since you're moving.
Okay, yep.
I'll get the most attention.
Okay.
The commission here is still projected to be here sometime this summer. They didn't give us an exact date, but we will be seeing a contract coming from them shortly, and I think that'll be a huge asset for Gedge Park and just the lake in general. Ash ore, the committee did take that up. It is still very prevalent around. They did recommend that we do start taking some of our ash trees out. So over the summer, we will periodically, and come for the plant, take some down, and replace them with some other trees as we go. I guess if anybody wants discussion, you can bring that up also. But the park comp plan, the park committee does plan to take up or meet at each park over the summer and go through it systematically and make recommendations and help data at the end of the year. And then also then keeping the parks open at this time, the committee did recommend keeping the playground equipment open by posting signs. So just be aware that, you know, keep your social distance and be aware that the virus may live on the equipment, so.
I know it's kind of a big discussion on all the lists, or is that I've been following of what's, what's, what different cities are doing all the way from basically just posting to taping off or using snow fencing, or if they have fences around the park, just closing down the whole, the whole park, but it's been, been interesting and have had some comments from concerned citizens about kids already, well, people gathering and using the equipment, so they think signs are going to work? Probably not. Liability issue is that, you know, if we do nothing, or if we do put signs, or to what if, the extent we do anything, is that potential concerns?
Well, I mean, I suppose there's always a concern, but I mean, I think if you do signage, I mean, I, I think on the equipment, the signage should, should probably say that, that there, you know, that you're not, you're not to go on the equipment. I think, I mean, I think the governor's order would prohibit the use of playground equipment, but not the playground itself, as I understand it, but, you know, so I think the sign should just maybe go beyond warning that there, that you could, that the virus could live on it. I think it should say that you're prohibited from using it, but I don't know, you know, what, I don't know what more. I don't think you're obligated to fence it in or put, you know, put a, some kind of special fencing around that people can't climb over. I mean, I, I think you got to make an effort to warn people that there's a danger, but I think beyond that, I think you've done enough.
How long before we can get the signs?
Actually, we put the signs up already.
Oh, okay, never mind, meeting adjourned, no.
But our signs do not state that they're off limits. It's just warning people that, oh, keep their social distance.
Oh, okay.
The people we're watching for is large crowds of people. The only large crowds I've seen are from the daycare over at, and it's not at the city park, it's the elementary school. They're going out during the day and playing. Other than that, it's, you may see one family, maybe two families occasionally in the parks, but there's not a lot of use. I suspect towards the end of the month, we'll see a little bit more.
When the weather turns, it'll be a different story.
So, you know, we'll probably be keeping an eye on it, making sure we don't have a large collection of people congregating. One of the last reports I heard, communities were talking about, you know, limiting it to, say, one family at a line, you know, on the equipment. Doesn't do a whole lot for if one of them has a virus and, you know, it's on there, but...
I think our recommendation would be signage with the, you know, in consideration of the whatever.
Do you understand the governor's order the same way, Tom? I mean, I would, I would think that it would say that you can't be on that equipment. I mean, it's touching stuff.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought the order covered that. I, I haven't looked at it real close with that particular in mind. I could review it more closely, but that was, my sense of it was that, that he was trying to keep people away from things that were touch items. You know, parks for getting fresh air and going for a walk and stuff were, were to be available, but you were not to be using facilities.
That's the way I understood it, too. Because you see down in the cities, a lot of parks are just putting some fence around their equipment.
So our experience when we were putting the new equipment in last year, I think, was we had caution tape around it before everything was finished, and people still went and played on it. So that was part of the discussion at the park and tree board meeting, that to some extent, people are going to do what they're going to do.
Should we try the signs first that do not use the equipment like you recommended, and then if we got to go farther, we can do the caution tape or something?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how much trouble we're going to for these signs. Signage is always an expense. I know, you know, if you get something that's fairly permanent, you know, that it's expensive. I don't, I don't know what ability, we probably don't have the ability to come up with a sign that would have any durability to it that's...
Well, I don't think they got a last, you know, the signs we got currently were fairly reasonable. I mean, they're, just put on the, you know, like that cardboard backing.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think if you said, you know, if you said, please stay off of the governor's order, I don't know what more you can do. I mean, if people are going to go on it anyway, they're going to go on it. I don't think a fence would stop if they're inclined to do it, but, look, except for the little kids.
Yeah. Well, liability-wise, I think it'd be pretty hard to prove what swing you...
Yeah, where, where you contracted the...
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
You, you end up with this, it's pretty hard to pinpoint where and how and who you got it.
Yeah, I agree.
So we want to pull signs that are closed?
I think, yeah. That's the, and I think you can just go ahead and do that under the, we don't need a council motion to do that, do we?
I don't think so.
It's under the governor's, governor's order and should fall within your spending authority of the administrator, hopefully.
We can laminate some of your...
Okay. Anything else on the, on...
Park and tree, what about, you know, we're kicking the rentals down the street here or down the road, too?
We sent letters to them at this point, just saying that they may be canceled depending on where the governor's order goes after the fourth.
Yep.
Just giving them a warning, Ron. I think you've had maybe one canceled, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
When do they start typically, first part of May?
I think it's right around the 20th of May.
Okay. Gives us a little time.
You want this back on the next agenda or, or the first meeting in May, maybe?
Yeah, we should have it back on the agenda again. And then, and my question is that if someone does cancel, what, what was the date that they canceled for? Was it earlier or later?
Well, they canceled, well, actually, there was two, one in July and one in August.
You know, if, if it opens up, would they get first preference for re-reserving, or how would that be?
Or can we just call the ones who canceled and say, would you like it back?
Well, it's something, something to think about, anyway.
I mean, they're not, things aren't canceled for July and August yet. They just canceled out of an abundance of caution. I mean, I mean, they, you know, there's no, there's nothing that says you can't do anything in July and August yet.
Right. Yeah, no, I don't know, I thought it was just something to think about, that, you know, we're doing a lot of things out of abundance of caution, too, but...
Yeah.
Okay, there's no action needed on that, and it is 6:30, so we... Okay, there's no action needed on that and it is 6:30, so we will recess the council meeting and we have called a order, a variance, a public hearing in regards to Fortitude Senior Living of Painswell LLC. And they are requesting a variance to go to a four-story building and we have representatives here in regard to that. We've got plenty of drawings, anything you want to add? Is there, oh, go ahead, we'll see if we can hear you and pick you up here, whatever you have to say, so.
I just, I came for the owner here to send him, and I guess I'm just here to answer any questions you guys might have.
Okay. So I do have three letters that have come in. I will read them and then they'll be entered into the record here. And this is from Cliff and Mary Cockkey and Jerry and Clara Leeser, dear city council, I think on board of adjustment that says, we oppose the variance for the four-story senior housing facility. We feel a building of that height should not be allowed in a residential area. That's one. The other is, says, sir, sorry there Alicia, but. I am certain that it is futile to write this letter, but I wish to express my opposition to rezoning this property. A three-story building in this location is bad enough, four stories is only worse. When are you going to take into consideration the wishes of the people already living in the area? What are you going to do for us? Why even have zoning at all if you don't follow it? We are totally opposed to this and this is respectfully yours, Gerald M., Meyer on Flanders Drive. And this is from Jim and Fay Pastor. We are Jim and Fay Pastor, our address is 430 Spruce Street, Painesville, Minnesota, 56362. Our property borders the proposed Fortitude Senior Living site to its south. Due to the COVID-19 concerns, we do not plan on attending the council meeting on April 13th, 2020. Even though we are in favor of this concept, we have several concerns regarding the final development. We realize some answers can be provided tonight and other concerns answered at a later meeting. Our first concern and most important is regarding the stormwater drainage. Currently it drains directly in the field and back of our home. During spring runoff and in heavy rains, the ditch is full of water. How is the runoff issue going to be addressed since the ditch will no longer be there? Second, if the plan turns out to be insufficient for the runoff and floods our home site, for the runoff and floods our home site, what is our course of action? Third, will this management issue be completed before the actual building is started? Fourth, since the main entrance and exit to the building is Highway 55, will the entrance to, entrance and exit to Spruce Street be a driveway or a street? We realize the reality of two-way traffic, however, we don't see the need for a shortcut to either Highway 55 or to Spruce Street. Regardless of the width of this route, is there a possibility for some form of speed breakers to slow vehicles, thus providing an additional layer of prevention? Thank you to all the city employees and the council members for their continual efforts to keep Painswell an incredible community regardless of these trying times. This is Jim and Fay Pastor. So can you answer some questions about the runoff?
Yes. The runoff, it'll all be designed by civil engineer. There will be a holding pond for the assisted living itself. And then on the nursing home, if it goes in, currently the ditch will stay there, that won't get changed at all until in the future, if they decide to put in a nursing home, there'll be another holding pond for that in the location where the ditch is actually.
Okay, what is the, which way does the water generally flow there? Because there's ditches on a couple of different areas there, right?
Pretty much just on the south is the only ditch. The rest of the lot is pretty, pretty flat.
So nothing, nothing goes to the north towards the, the highway ditch thing, correct?
Like Spruce Street into that ditch flowing towards that would kind of be.
Flowing towards that way, okay.
Does that ditch ever get overfull, that it runs into the, to Spruce or?
I guess it gets full, but I've never seen it overfull.
So the ditch is kind of a holding pond.
Yeah, it's kind of a holding pond now.
So if a new one is made that's probably quite a bit bigger, it should take care of the problem.
I sure will. Thanks for checking.
Yeah, they'll have to actually provide stormwater calculations to make sure they're counting for not all the water that's coming onto the site as well as what they're generating on their side.
Cause with the parking lot and everything, there'd be a lot more runoff than there is today.
Yeah, they'll have to show both pre and post.
One thing they do have going forward is the soil types down there are very conducive to infiltration, so.
So with phase one, you aren't planning on doing the drive to Spruce?
No.
Okay.
That kind of answers his next question, but.
But for phase two, and that was one question I had too, about speed bumps or something like they had to do behind the, you know, the sterns place down there for people cutting through there.
But this, this wouldn't be a street per se, it's a private property.
No, private, right.
People cutting across could be a violation of.
We can certainly do speed bumps, that's.
I think it'd be a pain to cut across and go through two parking lots.
Yeah, the way, the way, the way it's, it's designed here, it, it, no, it's not conducive for a car racer. Yeah, well, human, human nature, yeah. So those are concerns.
Okay, speed bumps, we can certainly put those in. That, that's not a problem at all.
Yeah. We probably won't need them for phase one.
No.
Unless they have four-wheel drive. Okay, um, and you know, and then again, the questions to the council would be, you know, in regards to the, you know, the, the four-story as opposed to the, the third story. I guess our questions have been answered firewise. Neil's got a question.
I think we talked a little bit about this before. Four-story, do we have enough water pressure?
I guess they will have to run the calculations to see what elevation they're at. I mean, there's plenty of supply there, but they may need to put a booster pump inside of their facility and I'm sure they're well aware of that.
So wouldn't be, we don't need to build a new tower or expand on, okay. We have booster pumps already in Painswell, I mean. As some of the manufacturing places in town that get water, do they sprinkler systems?
Most of them I don't believe do, but there may be one that do, but most of the booster pumps are at higher elevation than.
Tom talked about it at the planning meeting a little bit, but I'm wondering if you can hear just in the public forum on the effect that going to a three-story would be, how it would be, would Tom explain, was that then you wouldn't be able to have the underground parking and it would be on the west side of the lot instead of the east? Can you just elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes, we were, the reason we'd like to go to four stories is to minimize our lot coverage and also put the underground parking in so that we have room for water retainer and otherwise we're, with the nursing home, we're gonna, we won't be able to get all that in on the lot with holding ponds, et cetera, and parking.
I like the idea where the first one is about as far away as you can get from public housing as you can, as possible.
After what the original design, three-story, everything would be up against the residential area. So they are flip flopping.
Which is a lot of green space, even after the second project, there's still gonna be a lot of green space between the, the first set anyway.
Or open space, not all green. With phase one and phase two, what a total number of residents or total number of rooms?
Phase one, the assisted living building is 49 units.
Forty-nine?
Yep.
Okay.
The proposed nursing home, we didn't design it or anything, we kind of based it off of square footage wise with the Watkins one in our wings, but approximately 50 beds.
Fifty? Fifty beds, okay. If you went with a three-story, would that still be 49 rooms?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Yep, I believe he has.
Yeah, mine is saying it would just squeeze stuff to make room for the skilled nursing facility.
Yes, yep.
Anything else for the hearing?
I guess we've kind of brought that up, but I do like the underground parking and a building that is close to the park away from the homes. I think that addresses some of the letters. I don't know if they're aware of where you have it proposed, people that wrote letters.
I'm not sure if they are, but.
In my opinion, it does kind of address those items.
I guess our proposal here was to find the least intrusive way to the neighbors to accomplish this.
Yeah, one question, Chuck, you go through and make sure the water pond and all is good to go before they install anything, correct?
Yeah, everything's submitted and there's a review done of all the stormwater calculations.
So if we have a problem, it's you.
You could phase that a little different.
I could.
No, they, they have to provide stormwater calculations that show what's going and what their, what their site's generating and how they're dealing with all the stormwater.
Will this run into the new system we just put in? Cause that's really close, isn't it? The new stormwater and everything, all the new piping we just put in over there?
I believe the majority of this will be going down infiltrating. Is that correct on your?
The water, stormwater? Yeah, it's a, I'm not a civil engineer, but the site is primarily gravel, I believe, so they didn't release, I think it was gonna be too much of an issue there.
Can I ask a, so one of the, I guess, issues that was brought up in the past was, you know, like delivery trucks. So on your drawing here, do you know approximately where the entrance would be that the delivery trucks?
For deliveries? So coming from 55, primarily that all the deliveries will come right to the front of the building. If you look at the first floor plan, there's a kitchen.
Where that overhang is, is that?
Yes, primarily right next to it, on the end of the building there, on this, on the face will be a kitchen right next to the, primarily open up. Going up the front elevation, you can see the, the kitchen door to the right.
Okay.
And that'll be primarily all, all the deliveries, the garbage as well, will come in from 55 too.
In phase one, how many employees, I suppose a manager and some maintenance or how many people? Phase two, I don't know, it'd be a lot more people, would.
Yep. I believe their St. Joe building, they have approximately five, five or six there, I believe? I'm not quite positive on that one.
Well, you'd have, you'd have full-time managers, maintenance people.
Maintenance, caretakers.
Looking for a job now?
You never know. I got a lot of ambition.
End time.
Right now.
Right now. Anything else for the hearing? Bill, did you have anything?
Just the obvious things.
The obvious things, yep.
I, you know, I mean, again, not to beat it to death, but in trying to with a straight face, say that there's an undue hardship here is difficult for me. And also the concept that there's some unique circumstance regarding this property that requires this is difficult for me to, that's where our planning commission found, and far be it for me to say that it's not true, but.
So I'll just touch on those from the planning commission. We looked at both of those facts and we said, the undue hardship might not necessarily be on this property if it had to be three stories instead of four, but that would create an undue hardship on the rest of the property owners. The four-story design with the underground parking, the greater green space takes that hardship off of the neighbors. It preserves the sort of nature of that community with the green space, the more residential feel, even though it's a little bit taller. So that's how the planning commission came to its final conclusion.
Thank you for that. Anything else?
How much height are you adding with that fourth story? Is it about 10 feet?
About 10 more feet, 11 feet actually, 11 more feet.
We will close the hearing and go back into our regular session and we can deal with item B under old business in regards to that, which is on page 10 of your agenda. What are the council's wishes?
I'll make the motion approve the variance determination.
Motion by Gilmore, second by Renke to approve the variance determination, discussion?
I guess I have one more question now.
Okay.
Reading, I forget where, what page it was, page it was on, the flight pole people, it says, is Crand still the owner of that property?
I don't.
I believe he owns the building, not the business.
So he would own the, the land, so then everything's, something about pulling snow or pushing his snow into the.
It really shouldn't be a problem, there's gonna be a lot of green space between there.
And it sounds like that's, they have an agreement. I just wanted to make sure Crand's indeed owns it, cause there is a different company in the building.
It was my understanding that they entered into an easement agreement that covered all that before, sometime back. I think that was a condition of purchase, was that they get that agreement in place. It's been a long time and I don't specifically recall reading the agreement, but I'm, I'm reasonably confident that one was entered into.
On page 24 of the packet, there is an easement agreement that I did include that was recorded back in October of 18th, between Crand and Crand's LLC and the Fortitude Senior Living. So at that time, when the easement was entered into Crand and Crand's LLC was the owner of the property.
Okay.
So, and I did get a call from the neighbors over there, did bid signs, they were just curious on how close the easement was gonna be to their property line. And of course, the easement can go up to their property line, it's just that the, the entire easement is not gonna be used for roadway. There's gonna be green, and I did visit with Tom about that today, there's gonna be green space on each side of that roadway, it's not gonna be the full width of the easement.
Okay, anything else? Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Carry. Thank you for your patience.
Yes.
Great. Then we will go back up to new business, item C, and Ron is up again, and you're seeing your variable frequency drive for the aeration pond.
Yes, we do have this three 150 horse air frequency drive unit. They do supply all the air for the pond out there. And they were installed all through in 2012. One of them did go off and there is no repair in this unit. They have the two quotes and the loan being from Automated Systems, that is, the people who definitely supplied them, at the $9,486.
Why so much difference in price?
The other company, they did call me back and said they did have, or they will be switching suppliers.
Oh, so it wasn't them, it was where they get their. Okay.
Yes, I agree, that's huge.
I'll move to approve the quote from Automated, Automatic Systems Company in the amount of $9,486.
Second.
Motion by Renke, second by LeBeau to approve the quote from Automatic Systems Company in the amount of $9,486, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? I'd carry. All right, then down to old business, I had to see Town and Country Days. All right, then down to Old Business. I had to see Town and Country Days. I'm not down there yet. Go ahead and start, Ron. We met with Chamber and others.
Yes, myself, Mayor Adam from the Chamber, Chief Wagner, I think Steve Stany was also there. And as you can see, the layout that they presented to us, basically allows for, initially, we come onto the site, should be ample parks there and then a couple of the other items. The food court, I think we recommended moving over to the north along the road, just simply for easier access to water. And then the wild card pulling would be all the way on the opposite side and the carnival setup, or the carnival camping in their trailers would be pretty much off of Carnival 34. I think the main issue with this site was the eagers and ingres trying to get in and out of there. We did look at the access and that committee had kind of recommended that we look at either widening the approach or relocating it. A couple of issues with widening it, we would not be able to accommodate any stacking for any, the RVs that are coming in. And there was a big power pole sitting right there that we likely would have had to get Exel to move and they would charge us for relocating that pole. It would be much cheaper for us to relocate the pole approach. The other option here is to relocate the approach itself. We would go to a 36-foot wide enough, obviously for, to accommodate this here and for any future design of any building out there. And I think that, to me, is the key to this, is this will accommodate any, if the ambulance or any fire EMS is out there, so. And the cost on that obviously is at about $8,600 from Voss Plumbing, or $8,695.
Now, if we do that wrong, we should be able to guess in here. We should be able to put three campers on that roadway?
I would say yes.
Rather than on Lake Avenue waiting in a dump?
Yep.
Yep, because they get packed up there pretty hard. That corner, if you ever go in there with a camper, is a tough corner.
That was, that was discussed as part of the reasoning for doing this, in addition to making a kind of a frontage road for the future public safety building.
Correct.
Or parking or access or whatever.
And the public works did review this just prior to this meeting and they did recommend proceeding with it. And the funds would come out of the Street Capital Improvement Fund.
So with that, I'll make the motion to approve the quote from Voss Plumbing and Heating in the amount of $8,695 for this project.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Rinky to approve the quote from Voss Plumbing and Heating in the amount of $8,695. Discussion? And I just have one comment that leads to a question is that it's still up in the air as to whether or not that, you know, there are going to be Town and Country Days. Not that this, that makes a big difference in this, because there's going to be Town and Country Days there next year and, you know, the, this will benefit the, you know, the RV dump site and will be in place for the future public safety building. It's just going to want someone to come back and say, well, we're spending, you know, eight, almost $9,000 for an approach that's not going to be used this year.
And I would just add, living across the street, I think it's worth it just for the RV site benefits that you jam up for a long time.
Okay, anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carries. All right, then on to Item D and another COVID-19 related thing here, the gambling permit that we approved for the Ducks Unlimited, scheduled for April 16th and 17th. Had to, that event was canceled and they are looking to hold that on June 25th. And so we're looking for a motion to adjust their, the application for that, for their raffle then.
Move to approve the Corona's Ducks Unlimited fundraising raising event for June 25th, 2020 at the Painsville American Legion Post 271.
Motion by Rinky, seconded by Gilmore to approve the Corona's Ducks Unlimited fundraising raffle event for June 25th, 2020 at Painsville American Legion Post 271. Discussion?
Do we know why they went from a two-day event down to one day?
I think they have a sponsor night typically. Maybe they're doing away with that, but I don't know the answer.
I think they're doing a state raffle, too, and a raffle that the, under the state association is doing a raffle also, so they maybe don't need the whole.
I know typically, like Bill said, the first night was for the major sponsors, kind of appreciation thing for major sponsors. And the second night was actually event. So they must not be going to do the appreciation one.
Okay, well, that's their application. That's what the motion is. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carries. Okay, AMPI expansion project, Chuck?
Yeah, just to give a quick update on that project, the contractor continues to make good progress and there's actually nearing substantial completion. They're scheduling some startups for all the different pieces of equipment out there over the next couple of weeks. So hopefully in the next month or so, I'll be able to put that facility online. Your packet is a copy of P request number nine for Eagle Construction for work completed in March in the amount of $595,334.69.
I'll make the motion to approve payment estimate number nine payable to Eagle Construction Company Incorporated, amount of $595,334.69.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau to approve payment estimate number nine payable to Eagle Construction Company, Inc. in the amount of $595,334.69. Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? That carries. Anything else on there? All right, thank you then very much. Next item is the COVID-19 and emergency management update. Mr. Fred?
So nothing new really. Minnesota's sitting at 1650 cases, 70 deaths. They reported no deaths today. And there's still only seven in Stearns County. Last week, we saw a resident donate 14 N95 masks to the Stearns County Emergency Management. So they're coming down next week to pick those up. So they're still looking for those. Starting to get the storm spotters ready to go this year with COVID going on. You know, we have no training, so they have to do an online class. So we're getting that all and some paperwork and stuff figured out with them. So that's my project the next couple of days. That's where we sit with that.
Okay.
I do have.
Staffing wise, or go ahead.
I do have one question. On April 21st, which of course, 21st to 22nd was the admin process. We also have a community partners working session from 5:00 to 6:00 on the 21st. Did you want to continue with that or reschedule it?
We should probably reschedule that.
Can we try and reschedule it for that?
For that?
18th of May.
At the same time that the, we do the, or the candidates are here. That's kind of why we were piggybacking those, right?
Yeah.
Brandon's probably fairly busy and.
I think, what, May 18th?
Yes, May 18th, 5:00 to 6:00.
Okay, staffing wise, doing okay? Everybody's healthy, happy and, or maybe not happy?
Hope everything's, everybody in admin's doing very well.
Things are going well at the liquor store with staff and keeping?
Yep, still going well.
Okay, any other questions? Anything from law enforcement, other than keeping the hooligans off the playground equipment?
No, the only thing I would ask and let people know is, you know, we're not proactively enforcing stuff. If you see violations that you're concerned about, please contact us. Just because we see a collection of cars on the street doesn't mean we're going to go scare and knock and knock and bang and outdoors. So, you know, if you see violations, please, you know, contact us and we'll address them accordingly.
I've heard of some cities pulling people over and now looking for letters and working for essential. Know what happened already, not in this city.
Yeah.
Other cities, so there's probably 60 or 60% of the companies in town right now are giving letters out. Kind of doing that from the city here.
What I can tell the city is, we're not doing that, because based on the governor's orders. You can drive around all night if you want. If you want to control town, you can control town.
Yes.
There's no violation in driving around town, so there would be no purpose in stopping people and asking for letters. You know, we've obviously changed some of our practices, but for the most part, you know, for us, it's business as usual. We're just, we're not changing anything and doing anything different based on that, as far as enforcing side of stuff, so.
But if you hear something that wasn't, Painsville, it is.
Well, I just want people to know, because a lot of things, you know, Ron asked last Friday about, you know, the curfews and stuff like that. There are no curfews. We're not enforcing the curfews other than what's on the books for juveniles. You know, we're not just randomly stopping people and checking what they're doing. We will address concerns that come up, you know, as they're reported to us.
One thing that went through my mind last week when it was nice, not so much this weekend, is there are a lot of kids out on the street biking and playing. I don't know if we can, but could we, do we want to consider like a reduced speed limit for the next couple of months? I know Paul's jaw's at the floor, but I'm suggesting that, but.
Or can we do some kind of plan that, like the start seeing motorcycle thing, start paying more attention to?
Yeah, something to raise awareness, it goes, more people walking around than usual. Can we do a Facebook thing or a social media thing, be aware?
Social media can be used quite a bit. You know, speed limits, then.
Speeding it in the county.
And signage issues.
I certainly think you could use the city's website and Facebook and other things to encourage people that, to be aware that there's a lot of people that are walking and trying to keep their sanity and to be, be aware that there's people out there and kids out there and stuff. That, that's a good, that's a good idea, but I, I think changing speed limits would be difficult.
Took us five years to get the speed limit changed out there past Corona's tires. Well, that was, that's more than temporary, but.
And that's just it. I think the roads that we would want to see those speeds changed on are going to be Lake Avenue, this is 23. Those can be the two main roads where there's all, you know, higher speeds. And those are both county roads. So that's going to be tough. Where are we at, Ron, with Lake, Lake Avenue and our speed sign?
The permit on Lake Avenue is complete and that should be going in here shortly.
So two of the signs, and we're still working on some issues with Mindot on one, waiting for the company to actually get us the information. So Mindot will allow us to put that one up. But we do have portable one, the township on for that. So, you know, we get the one on Lake Avenue, you know, we do some publicity on social media. We do have the other portable trailer that we can put and maybe some of the hotspots where people are going to have a tendency to go a little faster. And I think that should probably assist.
It would hopefully.
So.
I just thought it was over on Stearns in Minnesota on that southwest side of the elementary school fields there. There was a lot of people and fair bit of traffic. So that's where it caught my attention.
Well, we can look to put like the trailer speed sign in that area. I mean, you know, flashing speed on that chair will, for us, you know, flashing speeds can catch your attention, so.
Not really COVID-related, but your two new officers are, you seen them out and about and getting to know the community?
We're adapting.
You're adapting, okay.
It's, it's been, it's been tough. They've gotten out, you know, trying to get out quite a bit, get through a lot of our bookwork stuff now while we're in the stay-at-home. You know, we're not seeing nearly the activity, so it makes it a little bit harder to train. But if all goes well, based on the plan we have in place, sometime by early July, they should be out on their own. Come first part of May here, I'll send one with Tom. I'll take the other one, flip to night shifts. And then switch in June and then hopefully by July, we'll be ready to go. Makes it a little tough. It's hard to get out and get introduced to the businesses when really nobody's open.
Yep.
The doors are locked.
So it makes it a little tough, but I know there was, and hopefully Matt's watching this, you know, there was the, was it the Painsville thing that they did? There was a suggestion made about, you know, doing kind of an interview. Just kind of thinking that might be a good option for them to, you know, have Mr. Bertram interview them and kind of as an introduction to the community, so.
Yeah, good idea.
I just got to get ahold of him to see if he's willing to do that or not.
All right, thank you.
Back on the COVID thing, this popped in my head. There's been a lot of social media posts about fire trucks and birthday parties for kids using the public works vehicles or EMT. Any discussion of that here? Requests for it? Opposition?
The only thing we have right now is our, as it stands, probably weekly Tuesday parades through town. Escorting cars. Other than that.
We've got a birthday coming up. You want a parade for it?
I don't. I'd rather not have to do it for my birthday in July.
But that's another, to let you guys know, you know, on Tuesdays, there was a group that formed last week, asked us to escort it. So spent about half an hour driving around town. Be doing the same thing again tomorrow at 2:00. So there really is no designated route. Quite honestly, I would prefer it that way at some point, because I'd rather not see much people start collecting to watch this. You know, we'll try and hit very streets that everybody can see it. But, you know, I don't know if we're going to set with this, you know, set pattern, so.
Did I see something about a car club on a run tomorrow, too?
That's, that's what this.
Oh, that's what that is, okay. Good, don't scare me. Hey, now anything else on? All right, then we'll move on to, you know, the next couple of items here are policies and procedures. Your marathon of meetings is coming to fruition here. First is Deputy Registrar position, Belinda.
This position, I have been temporarily filling since August of 2017. It is actually part of the motor vehicle specialist job descriptions, as we'll see as we go forward with the next item. So I just had asked policies and procedures and reported to council to get permission to start Melinda Chance on getting all the paperwork done through the state to get her appointed in that position. Policies and procedures had noted that they want her to complete the necessary training and testing and completely take control of July 1st in 2020. Hopefully that's still the plan and goal. Some of the testing that she would have to take is through the exam station. And right now, they're not giving tests, so that may, hopefully before July 1st, they are. But she can still be appointed in that position. We all have tests to take prior to the new Mindrive rolling out.
So that July 1st date, if they're not open, we could extend to August or September?
Well, and that's just a goal to have her completely trained by then, which she, you know, she's been here for two and a half years, two years.
Two years, yeah. Is there training that she can be doing right now?
Would we get caught up in everything? Yes, there is some, you know, online, there's some testing or anything she'd do, but she'd always go on the research things.
Okay.
I move to proceed with the State of Minnesota paperwork for the appointment of Melinda Chance as Deputy Registrar.
Second.
Motion by Rinky, seconded by LeBeau to proceed with the State of Minnesota paperwork for the appointment of Melinda Chance as the Deputy Registrar. Discussion? All in favor, aye? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried? All right, then, the next one, and several pages, job descriptions. Got some discussion. Belinda, are you gonna, or policies and procedures? We have several here dealing with whether or not exempt or non-exempt classifications for liquor store manager, public works, department airport manager, the police chief.
Policies and procedures have asked if I could check with Baker Tilly and with our labor attorney as to whether these three positions are exempt or non-exempt. Currently, the way they are being handled is the police chief is considered non-exempt, public works director, airport manager, and liquor store manager are both considered exempt, as is the city administrator position. The labor attorney got back to me, and that starts on page fifty-eight. There's several pages here that goes into her detailed explanation, explanation on that. But she says all three should be considered exempt positions.
What is, is that basically referring to overtime?
That's, that's one of the features of it. Exempt means basically they're exempt from the federal labor law information. You can always say somebody is non-exempt. You can not put them in the criteria of being exempt unless they fit a certain series of testings. But yes, it, it would be that they are not eligible for overtime if they're an exempt employee, they're a salaried employee. They also are not necessarily set on any specific hours per week, it's just their salary. So when their job is done, they are, they're done for the week. That's the biggest differences between them. Part of the question is whether or not they are a working, you know, where like Paul does patrol, Bill runs shifts at the liquor store, that, that plays a part in it. However, the labor attorney felt that enough of their position was managerial and their opinions, there was enough input put in to their opinions to the council that they would all be considered exempt. Now Baker Tilly came back and she had gotten their job description. She came back and initially said that they are all exempt employees as well. And then she asked if the police chief, how much time does he spend on patrol versus administrative functions? And the chief had said that he felt seventy-five percent patrol, twenty-five percent admin. And she thought that was the case, potentially the city may want to designate that position as non-exempt because they have that option going that direction. And then there's some question on overtime as far as that as well. And she, she felt, I think, that it could go either way. So it's just up to the council, you know, those job descriptions should really say, I, I believe mandated, they have to say that they're an exempt position or a non-exempt position. So that when someone is hired for that position, they know which way it is.
We'll just add in that all of these revised descriptions were sort of born out of the wage study in making sure that the jobs that everyone is doing reflect what they were sort of hired to do and what's in their description. So that when we look at what they're being paid for, that they're being paid for the work that's being performed. So as we went through and revised the descriptions, the exempt, non-exempt issue came with that.
Now, historically, you know, the requirements or the wishes have been to have a working chief. Once your, oh, your ears perked up when I mentioned chief.
I was reading, sorry.
Okay. You know, once your department is at full strength and things are running smoothly, do you look at yourself as being seventy-five percent patrolling and twenty-five admin?
It depends.
Okay.
And it's, you know, when we sat down and went through this, you know, I talked with one about it, it's, it's hard to say. Majority of my work, you know, I work during the days, we do not have, you know, there traditionally is not somebody else scheduled working with me, which means I'm responsible for the entire shift. That means casework call volume, you know, getting out and controlling. As of late, obviously, I haven't been doing as much as I wanted to simply because of the circumstances we've been in. You know, if we're staying full staffed with, you know, the new component of the SROs in there, I would say there's a high probability less of my time will have to be spent on the patrol side of things. It just really all depends upon how we schedule. Because before what was happening is our second day car we would have in, their responsibility was the school. So when I had somebody else on with me, they weren't responsible for patrol, they weren't responsible for calls, they were responsible for the school. So with Jerome and Tony in the school now, I would say that would decrease some.
So you're saying that you're the only one on D-shift?
Correct. Except when I'm training, so.
And from what I have seen in the response from the labor attorney, you know, a lot of times the liquor store manager is the only one working that shift as well. But she seemed to go more by, if you read like on page sixty-nine for the police chief, it talks about how of the twenty-nine duties in the job description, twenty of them, at least twenty of them are managerial in function. And the fact that he manages two or more employees. And then I think the liquor store was this, or liquor manager was the same of the job description. The majority of the jobs in that job description were managerial in stature. And employees, eight employees, so again, two or more employees.
Well, I think some of the reason for having the, you know, the weighted towards the patrol time for a chief was to be sure that the chief was not sitting behind the desk all the time and being out about in the community, you know, especially during, you know, business hours type of a thing. Where, in regards to the seventy-five, twenty-five, is that indicated was a big issue in, in whether or not it's classified as?
No, it seems to be more the job.
Exempt or none? Okay.
I think if I remember reading right, Baker Tilly talked about, and this is what I remember, is when you start talking that fifty percent, you know, the job was sixty percent administrative, then it would be a clear exempt position. And as you push beyond that fifty percent or less, then there's maybe some questions. You know, and for the most part, when I've been, you know, since I got here, you know, we've treated it, treated the position more as like an exempt, you know. It would, any additional time that was earned was earned as comp time. And then time taken off from there. You know, so whatever the council chooses to do, that's fine, you know. I guess two things I would ask, one, depending upon how you guys go. One, that we have an understanding that if I work those TZD hours, because it's a grant funded mandatory overtime that the city understands, that working those hours would be paid at that overtime rate. But then two, you know, when I have to switch into working these shifts with the guys field training them, you know, oftentimes we do end up with additional time. It'd be nice to, you know, figure out a way to better kind of work through some of that stuff. Normally, if I have extra time during a day shift or during my days when I'm on, I usually try and find some time to take off so I don't have to incur that additional time. When I'm on field training, I can't do that. There's no possible way to do that because I'm shorting guys' hours.
But you're still the only one of the departments that get paid overtime over forty? Everybody else is at forty-four?
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
My understanding, Ron and Bill, is that both of you guys are currently classified as exempt and are wishing to stay that way, is that correct? If I'm wrong, let me know.
I would think, listen, my party has that as track.
Then we'll start playing the game. Motion approve the exempt for the liquor store manager.
Second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Rinkie to approve exempt classification for liquor store manager, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried?
I'll move to approve exempt classification for the public works director, airport manager. Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Gilmore to approve exempt status for public works director slash airport manager, discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried?
I'll make a motion approve the exempt for the police chief.
Second.
Motion by Gilmore, seconded by Rinkie to approve exempt status for the police chief, discussion? Yep, okay, go ahead.
I agree with the sentiment, Mr. Mayor, that you expressed that sort of, we want to encourage patrol and working. So that's why I seconded open discussion, but I'm not sure yet how I'm going to vote. Because I want to, and still encourage Paul to get out there. And I know other cities have had issues where of our size, well, what's the last fight as exempt? That sort of encourages just the desk work. And I think by doing non-exempt, maybe we, you know, we provide that incentive to get out into the community and do other things. Belinda, do you know, looking at Baker Tilly's statement here, to be non-exempt but paying overtime on twenty-eight days rather than weekly, what that, how that works?
I shot her an email asking her to explain how that would work, and she has not gotten back to me yet. Because our payroll is set Sunday to Saturday, but just, I don't know how that would work for one employee out of everybody.
I would think we'd probably have to be one of those where we keep track of the hours per month or per twenty-eight days. And then that second twenty-eight days, you deal with it. And I, don't get me wrong, Sean, whether I'm exempt or non-exempt, the, my goal is not to survive that. The reason I took this job was because on the road, that's, you know, that's where I grew up, that's what I enjoy, I enjoy being on. It's just of late, it has not, with everything that's gone on with our agency over the course of the last couple of years, I've not had the ability to get out of the office as much as I would.
Alicia, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just wondering, when you were hired, was it explained to you that it was non-exempt position? Or, because you said pretty much since you started here, that's been the case?
Depending on the day. There were times when I was paid overtime, there's times when it was just put in the comp time.
Belinda, is it possible in the payroll system to do overtime for TZD shifts and things like that and not for regular city work?
Yes, she could code it that way.
It's actually already coded that way.
Because the TZD money doesn't come from the city, right? I mean, that's a grant.
Well, the city, the city pays it.
Reimbursed, oh, okay, okay.
In, you know, in regards to the seventy-five, twenty-five or whatever the split is, can, can that be worked out differently? Like through a job description or something, or?
I don't think the job description states percentage of which is which, it just lists the duties.
List the duties? Yeah, my sentiment too is, is that, you know, to have a, a working chief in a community our size is very, very important. Any other questions? Are we ready?
Sure.
Sure.
All the questions.
Okay, we do a motion to approve the exempt classifications for the police chief. Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Want to oppose, the motion does carry. Then, all those job descriptions, we have detailed following here, looking for motion to approve those.
Move to approve the city employee position job descriptions.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau to approve the city employee position job descriptions, discussion?
Just a reminder, these did all go through policies and procedures, and we did look at all of them in approval.
Yeah, through many meetings and hours and, pardon?
Line by line.
Line by line, yes.
Trees, many trees recite.
Trees. We, we do have a motion to the second, any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried?
I move to forward the job descriptions to Baker Tilly for appointing.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau to forward the job descriptions for Baker Tilly for appointing, and discussion?
One comment on that?
Yep.
I heard from Ann today on that, actually I emailed her and asked her what the cost would be. And she's giving us quite a big break on this.
Oh.
We have potentially nineteen job descriptions to turn in. Her standard fee is two fifty per position, and she's charging us twenty-five hundred for all of them because of the hassle throughout the whole wage study, she felt bad for that, so.
Twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, so it's a hundred and thirty-one per job description is what it comes out to instead of two fifty, so almost half price.
Do you have anything else, Neil, or is that your question?
That was going to be my question, and then, not that it's somewhat related, but what did it just cost us to do the wage study?
We got that bill as between eight and ten. I think it was over eight.
Eight thousand dollars. And I guess by getting this done now, we got two, we got just one year left of our current contract, correct?
Twenty, twenty-one.
Yeah, after twenty-one, we're going to, would it pay to put this out till then, or is it? Employee wise, if we get somebody could actually get, go an extra grade or, or be, due to the new description, there could be an increase in wages, correct?
That was the purpose of doing this, was when, when they brought the wage study back and we made adjustments to a couple of job descriptions. We wanted to make sure we were doing that.
If we do this now, it doesn't have to be done again in twenty-one, or twenty-two, I guess, would be the new.
Well, some of these haven't been redone since oh-eight, so definitely, I would think, more than a year before we.
I mean, yeah, we are going to incur this cost again in two years.
Well, it would depend on what, you know, what happens city-wise, you know, if we change, you know, other, you know, if I say motor vehicle goes away or something, we have to change job description. So not saying it's not going to be, happen to be done again, but, you know.
But it wouldn't be this many, for sure. I understand what you're saying.
Who knows, but, you know, and another reason, you know, that, that I think it should be done for what it's worth is we do have, you know, a new administrator coming aboard. It's nice to have these things all ready, laid out, approved, set, and them not have to worry or go through or wonder who's doing what or should be doing what.
It's kind of phase two of what we need to do for the employees.
Yep.
Okay, that answers my question.
Good, anything else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, none, that carried? All right, that's G and H, okay, then ordinance amendment, disposal of excess property, page one hundred and fifty, Ron. I recall it was you that was going to, looking to move this forward. And, okay, and this is coming from policies and procedures.
Policies reviewed in earlier draft, we recommended that what we reviewed be revised, that it matches the League of Minnesota's proposed ordinance, and it has been, so we recommend passage from that.
Yeah.
I think the biggest difference we put in there was change the surplus property ordinance to reflect the receipt of sale that goes back to the department.
Yes.
Rather than into the general fund.
Yeah.
I kind of read this over, where does it say where it goes back to the department?
It doesn't, it says as designated by the council.
Okay. Because I was looking for that, and I thought.
It's on page 152, Neil.
Yeah.
Letter out.
We just sort of made more sense if policy. Right, I was just looking for it to say to go back to the department where it originated.
Move to approve ordinance number 11, third series.
Second.
Motion by Renkey, seconded by LeBeau to approve ordinance number 11, third series. Discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I oppose, none, that carried. Next item is city manager position 153, we got another update from.
Nope, nothing to report.
Okay.
She said.
She, she sent out that she had contacted the other four, and they were okay with the dates of the 18th and 19th. What was that?
There was an email this afternoon about.
Yeah, from her, saying that.
She didn't contact.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm up on my email.
Neil got an email, you guys.
Oh, right. A red letter.
That's great.
That's great, Neil.
You can teach an old dog new tricks.
I'll drag you into the 20th century.
Next week is silencing your cell phone.
Okay, and there's update on that. Next item is Board of Appeals and Equalization meeting on page 154. The county assessor will not be here for our meeting on Thursday night, will be done digitally, same way we did this. We have two on the list so far. Anyone else has come in since then?
Two commercial properties.
Two commercial properties. How long do we have to hold it open? 30 minutes?
You have to have it open for 30 minutes.
30 minutes, that's what I thought.
Are they coming in, or did they submit letters?
Both of them have been in contact with me and the county, and I know for sure one is coming.
Okay.
All right.
They have not submitted any documents to me.
Okay.
And you've requested that, I think.
I asked them if they had anything that they want me to distribute prior to the Board of Adjustment to email or drop off.
Okay, all right, then informational, we have the notice on the condition use permit public hearing from the Stearns County.
Got a question about that?
Yep.
Is that something where the city could possibly submit a letter in support of that?
No, certainly. Could show up in person, too.
That's the night of our Board of Appeal and Equalization hearing.
Oh, yeah. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think anytime that we can show support to entities that are bringing people into our community, that that's, you know, a good opportunity for us to do so.
My biggest concern is not that this is a bad idea, but whether the city as a governmental organization can support a request by a religious organization.
Hmm. This was not something that should have come before our joint planning board either, should it falls outside of the realm of that, doesn't it?
Right, I think all the properties involved in that are north and east, and this is going the other way.
I mean, I, I just know that, like, Corona's ministries throughout the summer, a lot of people come up here to this area from all over the state and even beyond, and so it's, it's a wonderful thing for our economy here in the city. That's all I was, that's what I was thinking.
And the, the fire in their dining hall made this more of a, I think it speeded up. They tore the old tabernacle down, and what this is, is a, where that tabernacle was is where they're going to build this. It's a meeting center, dining facility.
I would be happy to sign on to a letter as an individual, but I don't support the city as a governmental entity signing one.
And they're not asking anything?
No, they're not asking. Oh, okay. No, they're just saying we could, we could call in if we wanted to.
I guess I wouldn't foresee a lot of opposition.
Certainly contact Mr. Notch and let him know.
Their neighbors from way ways away, they own a lot of property.
All right, then we have the 20, the other reports as listed there under item B, and the update from the League of Minnesota City's Annual Conference, which so far is still.
I went online today to make sure it was still.
Still being held, 24, 26, St. Paul River Center. And let Melinda know if you plan on attending, and.
Imagine, I'm going to need a break.
Get up to the big city.
Okay, so then with that, we will be going into closed session to discuss an offer on real property located at the 810 Deekman Drive, block four, block two, Deekman Business Park, block two, parcel number 70.38748.0030, and we will ask the attorney to stay.